Good evening and welcome to the regular commission meeting for August 5, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order now if we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Say clerk, would you please call roll?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Vasquez. Here, Commissioner Clark.
Here.
Commissioner Suzanne.
Here.
Commissioner Dickey.
Here.
Mayor Dr.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, next approval of regular agendas. We do not have workshop tonight, so approval of the regular agenda. Any changes and comments?
I would like to add something if possible. Bring up parking fees again. I spoke with our city manager. I promise it'll be like five minutes or less.
All right. Anyone? Okay, we'll add that.
Thank you.
That will be H. 12.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to move on to proclamations, recognition certificates of appreciation, and we have today a presentation of $1.5 million state legislative appropriation by Representative Linda Cheney.
Mr. Mayor, Commission, it's a pleasure to present you all with a $1.5 million check for your Public Works Department. I know I spent about six weeks living at the Billmar after Hurricane Helene, and you were gracious enough to give me office space up on your fifth floor of this beautiful building. I had a really nice view that way. The view that way, it's amazing to see the transformation because I was watching the dump trucks come in with all of the debris all day long in your park. And so it's just, it's wonderful to see some of the recovery in our community, and I applaud you for that. Good job. You can't tell that field was ever anything but what it is now, that park. So good job. And I know that you will spend this money well. I know you need more, and I expect to hear back from you next session. As you know, this was a difficult session for money and other things, but fortunately, the governor loves the beaches and we have a good relationship with him, so we were able to get this through. My fellow legislators and the governor are to thank for this check. So congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I know you guys worked hard for us. Our senators, our representative, all the, everybody was working hard, so, and we appreciate it.
We will always advocate for the beaches, always.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to get a picture of you and the commissioners. Representative Cheney? Chief Barkley and I, on behalf of the commission and the entire city, have a plaque for you just commemorating your support of first responders in Treasure Island. Thank you. All right, next we have our public comments for non-agenda items. All right, the first one, Buzzy Barnett.
Good evening, Buzzy Barnett, 201, 104th. That was a nice, nice gift from the state, so I know everybody appreciates that. And I want to be here in a positive way. I really do. I just want to go over a few things that had happened to me personally. Mr. Van Sant is new, and I'm looking for some great things that you're going to do here for our city because I've been here for over 65 years, so I'm looking forward to what you do for our city. I'm just going to talk about a few things, and this is not, I don't want to be negative. I want it, I want it to be out there, so we'll go forward with it. The first one was, you know, in my business, I ran my own business for 40 years, you know, and salespeople, they would do things that weren't always right. And you would say, just learn from your mistakes and correct them and go forward. And I think as a city, that is what we need to do. We need to learn from our mistakes and go forward. And to say our, our permit department was overwhelmed during the storm is an understatement, but to say our permit department was in good shape before the storm would also be an understatement. I'll give you a quick example. I went to build a double garage with a side entrance for a golf cart with one of the top builders in the city. People probably can guess who that is. And we filed permits, and first of all, I called two architects and said, no, thank you, we're not going to work with Treasure Island. And that's, my wife will back that up, you know, she doesn't lie. So I'm telling you the truth, two architects said, we're not going to work with Treasure Island. And that in itself was, you know, kind of stunned me. I couldn't believe it. And then I kind of saw why. My builder would put in the appropriate paperwork, and they would call for duplicates and duplicates. It went on for six months for a simple garage, and then COVID hit. Needless to say, COVID cost me, because then I couldn't build it because we didn't have the materials or the help, and it cost me thousands of dollars in extra money to build that garage, which he did a fantastic job. It looks great. Well, fast forward to the storm. Luckily, my wife and I were at, we're in the new garage, we're up in the garage in the attic, watching the water rise, and I thought, oh, my goodness, we're in bad shape here. Luckily, we only had six inches of water in our house, and we, and the water started receding around 2:30 in the morning, and we had all the water out by 5:00 a.m. My son showed up the next day with his crew. He does natural disasters all over Fort Myers. He was the first call the police chiefs made to him, communications and all his help. So anyway, he pulled the baseboards and cut two feet of sheet rock. I called a company the following week. They came out and said, you're so fortunate. You've got no moisture, no water. You can immediately start rebuilding your house. That's where the good part came in. So I came up to the city. They said, you got to have a substantial damage letter. Well, that took, as you can imagine, a while. It came back at, I think, 17%. So I trucked back over here with my substantial damage letter for two feet of sheet rock. My electrical worked fine, my heating and air, my air conditioners outside worked fine, no issues. All I needed was two feet of sheet rock and paint. This was in October, the end of September, 1st of October. I got my permit December the 26th. I guess it was a late Christmas present. But that's, you know, that's what happened to me, and it happened to a lot of my friends. And so, not to be negative, just I want you to know what happened to a lot of residents. It happened to me, it happened to a lot of people. Now, Arden, thank you. I know you, you helped us a lot, and I do appreciate that a lot. And I've told a lot of people that, I tell people, call Arden, bless your heart. So, but anyway, what, all I'm saying is, Mr. City Manager, we have some issues with our permit department. We have in the past. I would suggest you grab some of these big builders that we have around here that are really professional and well thought of, and maybe have a sit down with them over a cup of coffee or something, and figure out what their issues were in the past, and let's all try to work together to rebuild the city back to where it can be. Thank y'all for what y'all, y'all looking great up there, and you seem like you're all getting along great, so I'm happy for that. Thank y'all for everything you're doing.
Thank you, Buzzy. Ian Boyle?
Hello, my name's Ian Boyle. I'm Government Affairs Manager for Waste Connections of Florida. I got some handouts I'd like to hand out, if that's okay, everyone? I know usually there's like a three-minute time limit, and I'm probably going to go over, just to be perfectly honest. I'm here to speak about the discussion you guys are having about the privatization of your municipal solid waste department. Basically, there's just stuff I want to kind of talk about, just kind of get it out there with my experience. I've been working in this industry for about 16 years with Waste Connections. Our, my company's the third largest in North America. Me personally, I've been part of over 150 to 160 procurement processes all throughout the state of Florida. Our Pinellas office is in Clearwater, 11543rd Street North. In addition to our unincorporated work, we have seven municipal contracts on the beach. South Pasadena, St. Pete Beach, Reddington Beach, Reddington Shores, Indian Shores, Indian Rocks Beach, that's curbside recycling and condo recycling only, and Bel Air Shores. Just so we're on, I, just so I can, I'm not here to speak against the city's desire to privatize, and I'm not even here to speak against Waste Pro, which is a competitor. They're a good company, and I can see why you're talking to them. Obviously, they're our current vendor. What I'm here to speak about is the process, and there's two things I kind of believe strongly, and I just kind of want to get on the record after my 16 years plus experience. And also, this is stuff that if, if we, there was some outreach, just kind of meeting with staff and kind of talking about it, these are stuff that would have brought up, just stuff that you should probably consider in a contract or consider as you go forward, just from stuff that I've seen. So anyway, I, I do truly believe that if the city does want to privatize, they should do it through a procurement process. This opens competition and allows all the vendors the ample time to kind of go through all your services and see what your needs are and put together a price that fits your needs. I, I've been, for the last 10 years, I'd have to say, I've had personal conversations with city staff and with commissioners about privatization. 10 years ago, there was some discussion about it, and we tried to make outreach. I think it was Commissioner, I can't remember the commissioner at the time. I talked to Commissioner Dickey last year at the Florida Association of Counties. He directed me to make an outreach of staff, which I did. They never got back to me. I did have a conversation with your Public Works Director, Gary Volnick, on June 10th. When that conversation ended, I thought there was going to be more conversations about talking with vendors. I was shocked when I saw that what happened on July 1st. The other thing, the other thing that I feel strongly about, from that July 1st meeting, it was mentioned that you were looking at the North Reddington Beach contract as a comparison. North Reddington Beach gave Waste Pro a good, good reference, which I totally get, totally understand. I just feel strongly that you should not use North Reddington Beach as a comparison and use it as for your piggyback contract if you want to use it as a vehicle. And part of my packet there, I created some kind of comparison, the difference between the numbers. You have about, at least from all the information I have, about 2,100 single-family homes, about 260 commercial businesses. North Reddington Beach is about 348 homes and 71-ish commercial businesses. You're actually more closer to St. Pete Beach. There, over there, they have 2-1 service. You're looking for 2-1-1 service. North Reddington Beach actually starts at 8 o'clock. You guys, obviously, you're a 7 o'clock start. These are just things that are different. The other thing that I, that I noticed that was a concern, which I would bring out, it was that, you know, North Reddington, North Reddington bills residents individually. I'm pretty sure that's what Treasure Island, they put their service on taxes and so forth. With one source payment, you're guaranteed that your trash is going to be picked up. We have one source payments in Reddington Shores. We have one source payment in Dade City. Just recently, a municipality, and I presented the article in there, a municipality in Newport Ritchie, actually, it was an open market up there. They went out to bid and franchise to one hall, which happened to be J.D. Parker, which is Waste Pro. They were billing the customers individually. At that time, 45% of the people were not paying, because there were a lot of renters. Trash was left at the curb. Residents were getting upset. At, as such, they actually passed, they actually went back to putting it, billing on the taxes. So I would check with Newport Ritchie first before you put anything together as far as the billing goes.
I'm sorry, but I am going to need to cut you off at the five-minute mark.
Okay. Anyway, I have any other information. If anyone makes an outreach to us, I think, I think it's best for you guys to just look at, at least, at least meet with the vendors and ask us questions. That's just my, my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Howey?
Good evening. Mark Howey, District 3. I want to speak just briefly about the unfortunate separation of Renee Terrestana. I don't have all the details, of course, but I've already heard enough of the official narrative regarding the recent separation of her as an employee for the city of Treasure Island. I'm calling BS. Renee was a cheerful, helpful city employee from the start. She started at the reception desk at the old city hall. She worked in parks and rec, and ultimately as part of community development. Here, after the hurricanes, she excelled, stepping into the raging fire of permit processing. Staged in the city hall lobby, Renee was face-to-face daily with the shell-shocked residents, many angry, emotional, frustrated with trying to get the permits to rebuild their home. Renee offered kind words, hope, and understanding, as well as solutions for getting their permits moving. She helped many residents directly, many more through her weekly permit process seminars. How many? I don't know. Just ask around town, and you'll hear her name mentioned repeatedly. In the past couple of months, she was relegated to the reception desk, but still answered questions about permits. She wanted to do more. She felt she could learn more. She had achieved her bachelor's degree and wanted to contribute. Instead, she was kicked to the curb. Was it the result of the lack of qualifications or experience? I don't know. Qualifications and experience haven't factored into much of the hiring and promotion of others in city hall as of late. Was it professional jealousy? Renee getting kudos for her concern about our citizens while others did not? Was it fear of an assertive, confident woman? From looking at Facebook posts from around here, I would have thought this would have been a virtue to be celebrated. Whatever the reason, this is a big loss for Treasure Island residents, many who are still trying to work through the permit process. Renee isn't perfect. She's no angel, but she cared about our residents during a time of great anguish and need. To me, this happened, this, what's happened is emblematic of repeated missteps and failures by the city's personnel practices. Renee wasn't driven away by mean Facebook posts, tweets, or texts, but by unscrupulous HR politics. What a waste.
Thank you, Mark. All right, that's all we have for, yep, all right, come on up. We are going to try and move forward in the future, everybody to have the cards filled out if you're going to speak. So, thanks, Mike.
All right. Mike Braddy, 119504, Street East in Treasure Island, Isle of Capri. And I guess I don't need to speak now, because I was going to say the same thing. You know, Renee, many times was kind of the face of Treasure Island. You'd walk into, especially the old city hall, and she was the bright, cheery person you would see, and she was always there to help. Moved over here and after the storm, she was the person that really helped you along with Arden and Arden's wife, getting your building permit. We would not have her a building permit if it was not for Renee. So I don't want to go long-winded. I just want to say that I think it was a major mistake to lose a person like Renee. I think she was a good employee of our city. I think she worked diligently in our city, and I didn't know of anybody that ever had a bad word to say about her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, moving on for the approval of the minutes. Approval of the following minutes, February 4, 2025, regular and workshop meetings, July 1, 2025. Do we have a, a motion?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
We have a move, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Let's take a vote, a voice count. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, ayes have it. All right, moving on into item I. 1, second reading of ordinance 2025-08, and I believe that, are you going to be, Anthony, speaking or reading a longer?
One quick, yes, yes, Mayor, I'll do that. And then just one thing, it's not numbered, but we put in the city manager and And then, just one thing, it's not numbered, but we put in the city manager and city attorney reports sort of between the minutes and the consent. We can move it till later, it's totally fine, fine doing either way, but I can see why you spend time, because it's not numbered, actually, it's just sort of in there. But we can move to that, or we can just go right into ordinance, it's your choice.
Let's go ahead and do the reports.
Yeah, I'll be brief, just been working hard with our staff, multiple, pretty long meetings regarding TMM. I won't go too into detail, because obviously, it's on the agenda and it's ongoing conversation, but we've been having a lot of meetings on that and getting ready to prepare a good ordinance with our hard-working staff here, so we're pretty excited about that on the TMM front. Also, meeting with some pretty exciting applicants who are coming to the city with some comp plan amendments and some zoning changes that I think you guys will largely be very excited about. You know, it's people taking the temperature of the commission and coming with some pretty innovative, pretty interesting ideas I think you guys are really going to like. So we've been doing that, working with our manager to get up to date and working with, you know, just a host of other smaller staff issues. Other than that, not working on any particular ordinance other than TMM and these comp plan-related amendments, but if you have anything else you want me to take note of and work on, just let me know. And always happy to meet with you guys. Of course, my hours are always going to be the days of the meetings and the workshops, doing office hours the same days, so appreciate it.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, sir, I have quite a few things. Welcome, I'm glad you're here, happy to be your city manager, happy.
That I'm here, and I'll turn on until I get the green light. All right, so, Kim, my assistant, gave me a wonderful list of things that our staff is doing. That is not what's in this PowerPoint, which I think I left upstairs on my desk, but of note, we entertained the regional director for U.S. Senator Ashley Moody yesterday morning. She's planning on visiting later in the month, tentatively August 28th, depending on if they actually get the summer recess when they think they are and all those things. We were able to talk to him about the bridge that we own and have a half a mil of our tax money dedicated to and how we would love to give it back. We were able to talk to him about our public safety concerns, gave him a windshield tour of Sunset Beach. Chief Bars put us in the jacked-up pickup truck and took us down that way and around 108th, and asked him not to get out and step on a nail and file workers' comp suit and everything for what's going on our property up there. Later this week, Representative Luna's staff is going to be here, so twice in a week in Treasure Island, of, you know, less than 7,000 people, you're getting two federal representatives in here. I think that's pretty good. Don't know if that happens normally, and your state representative dropping by tonight, so all that's good stuff. Chief Bars swore in on July 1st as the state Fire Chiefs President. Chief Barclay swore in as the third Vice President. I apologize, what's the association?
Florida Police Chiefs Association.
Florida Police Chiefs Association. And it's not a coincidence, when you have public safety leaders and first responders that are in the hierarchy of statewide committees, that you get the kind of attention, you know, I, I just know enough statistics to be dangerous, but Representative Moody's, or Senator Moody's regional director said, hey, I told her y'all were 1% of Pinellas County's population, sustained 10% of the damage, still had tons of rebuilding to do, and she wants to come here. So all that I take as a positive note, and I'll get into what Jason, our PIO, made here for me tonight. This is your beautiful city. Next slide, please. Am I clicking these, or am I supposed to do that? Where am I aiming? All right. Gotcha, gotcha, sorry. So a little Rebuild Treasure Island update. We had a fantastic group of community members that I, for one, appreciate. I would encourage you to show your appreciation, gratitude, as you meet these people on the street. They made a huge, significant, beneficial impact. As Treasure Island's trying to literally rebuild ourselves out of a hole, we were able to put in $27 million worth of grant applications on five major projects. We still would have to front the money, but we could be reimbursed 75 cents on the dollar for those projects that were submitted. We're sunsetting that group as of July 21st. We have a lot of great citizens. I've met with several of them. There is an extremely high degree of education and experience in this community. I appreciate that. Expect to hear from me from time to time, as I need input and history lessons. I've gotten a few already. And I'm, I kind of like civics. At some point, I was a certified social studies teacher in Florida in the 90s. History's a big part. Some of it you want to repeat, some of it you don't, but if you don't know it, we're doomed to repeat it, right? So I agree with you, sir. We just need to look forward, marching on from wherever we were, not holding anything against any, anybody that was given information or direction from previous commissions or previous leadership in the city. We just need to focus on our way ahead. We will continue to do that. If I see the need in the future to have another Citizens Advisory Group, I've been on those and I've called for those before, I would most likely come back to the commission and just ask each of you to cough up one constituent from your own district to represent on whatever that might be moving forward. Little update on outsourcing the trash service. There's all kinds of good reasons that I've listed here, I'm not going to read the slide to you, that we should do this. We're looking at some potential savings per household in Treasure Island that could total up to $600,000, maybe a little north of that. We are in contract negotiations with Waste Pro. I can't give you an exact date. They'll have to have their staffing plan right. The last guidance I gave to Mr. Volnek, our Public Works Director, was to figure out, and this was a great question Commissioner Dickey asked me, if we give up 100% of our capability, trash trucks, sanitation workers and all that, did we give up 100% of the cost? Not quite. We've got several trash cans along the beach that, you know, Waste Pro's not going to go down there and pick those up, so we're, we're looking at some ways to do that with Parks and Rec and existing staff. And we do have a dedicated enterprise fund with sanitation fees in it, so we'll, we'll make that work and pay those Parks and Rec's people out of that for as long as that money lasts and just work that into future budgets. Any questions on that?
Only question I would ask, is we did hear from the gentleman.
Thank you. We did hear from the gentleman from Waste Connections, and we have skipped the normal procurement process here. Can you just elaborate on, on why we're not opening this up for bid?
I would turn around and ask you guys, because I was sitting there on July 1st, I think it was July 1st, 1st or the 8th, and I heard, I believe I heard this commission give direction to seek a piggyback to expedite the process, but if the five of you tell me to do something different, then we can step on, tap the brake and do something different.
You could also do both. You can entertain the piggyback, you know, prep that while you're doing a bid and then see what comes up better, but I do remember there was a, I think unanimous commission on outsourcing, but probably two factions on whether to bid or do piggyback, and I think maybe piggyback was the last word.
Well, if I can comment real quick, it wasn't just a piggyback, it was the fact that they're also a current vendor, and we didn't think that, that, you know, getting another bid was going to make, you know, 50 cents difference. I mean, they're going to come in, ride the same. And the other thing I've heard that I wanted to spell, and thank God tonight actually proves it, everyone's like, well, if you get locked into a contract, your rates can go up. Gary's already addressed that, I think, with a long-term contract with small CPI, but tonight's a perfect example. There's 20 people that want this business, so it's not like we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get rid of all of our trash trucks, and they're going to come and try to put some huge increase. All we have to do is call these guys or someone else, and they'd come out and do it. So I, I don't see wasting another six months after we've already wasted a year on this to go do anything different. So I think we need to keep trudging down the path that we're on and that we all agreed on.
I agree. I think we also have to build our Public Works Department back, so that'll take time as well, so.
I agree as well.
Yep. Yeah, I think that, you know, piggybacking is the, the best way for us to go, and, you know, really, we're not going to have much of a difference, any real difference to, to go. As it stands, we are at $8 per household, $96 of savings. There's not a whole lot more of savings that can probably be put into that.
So I'm not going, I'm just saying, I think normally, we go through a bidding and a procurement process, and we, and we chose to skip that. The way I thought we left this was that we were going to go look, do, do a set of financial, some financial analysis on there and bring it back. And I have not seen that financial analysis. I see what you have here. I did ask the city manager at one point in time, we know that 100% in this scenario, 100% of the revenue is going away, is 100% of the cost going away. So if the answer to that is yes, then yeah, you're right, we're, we're just going to save $600,000 to $700,000. If the answer is no, we still have a half a million dollars in expenses that we're going to have to pick up that's not part of this contract, that just needs to be part of the discussion. So what, the only thing I would caution us at this stage is, is we have not yet, other than this slide, we have not yet seen a financial analysis of this to get, to get, to be able to make a solid decision on it. So I would just ask, before we sign a contract or press the go button.
Oh, yes, sir, this will come back to you with a fully fleshed-out contract to consider and vote upon.
Well, not just a fully fleshed-out contract, but a fully fleshed-out financial analysis, again, to make sure that we've, we've accounted for all the cost.
Yes, I'm in, I'm in agreement with you.
Thank you, thank you. That, that's all I'm asking.
Personally, I would think that we've already dealt with this issue. It did come up, we did, we took a look at it. I know that there's been some communications going on.
So, so literally, the last task, if you want the detail, to give you a full up what it's going to cost, we have multiple trash cans along the beach. We've captured those in a map and given them to Waste Pro and asked them, what of these can you handle? If we put some extra dumpsters down there and our Parks and Rec people empty the cans in the dumpster, can you get your truck to the dumpster? Where would it need to be? So we're at that level, pretty granular detail. I didn't want to bring that up, but if you want to get that granular with it, I can call Gary up and go even deeper, but that's kind of where we're at before we know final, final numbers.
Yeah. Again, again, I, conceptually, I'm all for doing this, so don't, don't misread, misread what I'm saying. I'm just saying, we, I haven't seen a financial analysis, and I would like to see it before we sign the dotted line.
Well, I think that we should be taking a look at, giving it's off to you at this point. You and Gary work together, handing this over to them and, and get back with us.
Yes, sir, I think that's pretty much where we are. Gary, you needed to say anything?
Okay. But our direction is for the vendor.
I just meant for with the piggyback with Waste Pro.
Correct. Got it, yes.
Yes, sir.
Good?
100%. I say keep the pedal to the metal.
Moving on. Okay, so the drain modification manual, we're looking at a, I hate to use the word radical, but a pretty radical simplification of that manual. Creating something that's much easier for somebody, whether it's a homeowner doing their own home improvements, or an engineer, or whomever, to pick up and read that's very straightforward, that addresses drainage, and keeps the idea that filled dirt is legal and helpful coming on Treasure Island. It will take some time. It does affect eight chapters of our existing city ordinances. There's pieces of that that need to be fleshed out. As recently as 4:00 today, I sat down with CDD, Mr. Volnek, our Public Works Director/licensed Civil Engineer, and our attorney, and I think we're going to try to do a expedited, kind of like, I would call it a special projects officer in the military, maybe go out as early as this week, get a couple of our staff to solicit some people who are capable of rereading all those eight chapters of ordinances, rewriting the pieces, taking out the language that supports TMM, and Mr. Sabatini's, looking at which two are you looking at? I don't want to put words in your mouth, the other two cities.
Madeira and St. Pete Beach have fill and drainage ordinances that are simplified and seem not to have any issues and have widespread support, so we're using them as a model. And as Charlie pointed out, having an in-house person, all of you would be able to have personal feedback to them as they're working through this, and, you know, it can reflect the concerns of the five commissioners.
So, any other questions on that? I know it's coming up later on the agenda, but just want to let you know where we were from our perspective. Back to the work that Rebuild TI did and the grants that were submitted through our Economic Development Department, the items on the right were specifically for the resiliency grant. So that was what was submitted Friday before last, and resiliency simply means we're going to try to harden our city before the next storm. So everything that was a grant that was approachable from that end is making us more prepared for the next storm, is in the white letters on the black background on the right. Two of those projects happened to overlap with this current five-member city commission's direction on April 22nd of this year in a workshop. You codified in that workshop 13 CIP priorities. You've accomplished number one, which was a new bus for the rec department, and master pump station on down to seawalls are the next five. We're not abandoning those for the five on the right, but any of those five on the right that get funded could possibly free up existing CIP funding to keep going down your list of 13. Any questions on that? Public safety. I'm tapping the brakes on the public safety building. The Public Works Director and I are going to assume the leadership of finding the best fit for Treasure Island. The Chiefs, Police, and Fire have both made some significant contributions. I'm in talks with some people that I know build public safety buildings in other parts of the state to give you a, a broader picture of cost and possibilities for that, and when I get something a little more solid, of course, I'll bring it back to you for a decision. Parking, I know you guys are going to touch on this at the end of the meeting. We've hired the third parking attendant, so we do have seven-day-a-week enforcement now, which is a step up. People aren't really fighting for that entry-level job in the police department, but we do have somebody on board now. And, you know, I'll take whatever direction you want to give. I've got enough big plans and studies to do. I don't want to get into another big study on parking right now, but if you give me the authority to raise it a dollar or two an hour for 30 days, it'll actually take some ordinances. If y'all had given me that direction tonight, I wanted to do it between now and Labor Day weekend and just kind of compare it to last year's same timeframe as we wrap up the summer. I understand after Labor Day is, the rest of September is a little more desolate around here as far as tourists, but I'll, I'll take whatever direction, but I, I don't think we would see a, a significant change other than a positive change to our bottom line if we raise it a dollar or two an hour, but that'll be up to y'all. Community development review. I'm engaging a company out of North Florida under my city manager's spending policy to come in and help me and CDD kind of assess where we are, try to streamline some policies, some systems, some outputs. My dad has a saying, some of y'all met him a couple weeks ago, every tub has to sit on its own bottom. CDD has three compartmentalized restricted accounts. It needs to fund itself. You have been very generous and gracious in refunding permitting fees, offsetting costs, but at some point, CDD needs to sustain itself, and I'm trying to find that right balance of manpower and fee collection to where it can do that. And that's it.
Great, thank you. And Arden?
And, Arden, Commissioner Dickey, I too appreciate very much the work that you did with the Rebuild Treasure Island.
Thank you.
And it's being sunset, but you were a major part of that, and hopefully, we're going to end up with $29 million on the behalf of the city. So we do appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you, Mayor Dr. I've got some more comments on that in my commissioner comments.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, let's move on to items of business. Second reading of ordinance 25, or 2025-08.
Oh, sir, the consent agenda, I'm sorry, we threw you off. We never adopted it.
Yeah, I think I interrupted, so.
Ah, okay. So, no, we did, for the consent agenda, didn't we have a voice vote?
You approved the minutes.
Approved the minutes, okay. All righty. Let's go ahead and approve the consent agenda.
Do you want to do it as a whole?
Yes.
Because they had them separate.
No, they-
Okay, that's fine.
They're as a whole.
Your guidance. I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on consent agenda. Any discussion? Once again, we'll take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay. Hearing? None. Motion passes. Second reading of ordinance 2025-08. I'll pass it on to you there, Anthony.
Ordinance 2508, an ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, amending Chapter 65 of the Dakota ordinances of Treasure Island related to impact fees, changing the title from fees to impact fees, amending Section 65-1, amending and renaming 65-2 from transportation impact fee to multimodal, providing for conflicts, providing for severability codification, providing for effective date. And that is all.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 2025-08, amending Chapter 65 to adopt the multimodal impact fee.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion for staff? Okay. Hearing? None. Do we have public comments? Hearing? None. We'll close public comments. And we will bring it back here. Any discussion for the five of us?
No.
All right. So this is an ordinance, so we need to take a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Suzan?
No.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes four to one. All right, resolution, providing for a 24-month moratorium on collection of multimodal impact fees.
I move to approve imposing a four-year waiver of fees on collecting multimodal impact fees as suggested by Richard Harris, Chair of the LPA and P&amp;Z, although he suggested five years. I hope we could waiver it for four years. No second, it dies. Let's give the two years. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment? West?
Do you have my card?
Up.
I did turn one in.
I do, but it's under H, so that's why it's, come on up. You've got it under H, and on my computer, it's under I.
Yeah, that's weird. No, yours is all.
Yeah.
You are correct.
Anyway, Richard Harris, 374 Bay Plaza, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board, and I have been a registered professional engineer for 36 years now, 39 years now, geez, I'll get my numbers right. Anyway, in my career, I did a lot of work with transportation impact fees. They've been around forever. The reason why the P&amp;Z Board moved to approve this a few years, a few months ago was because when a house is torn down, unless you build a huge, much bigger house, your impact fee is going to be zero. When the Thunderbird tears down their hotel, and if they build back 106 rooms, which they currently are planning, their impact fees will be zero. This is for the increase in development. The situation is, is we got kicked in the teeth pretty good last September 26 by two storms. Our downtown is a disaster. The Gators property, a disaster. The club, a disaster. Treasure Bay, a disaster. What I'm looking for is to give the developers a little bit of a break, so they can get their feet back under them. You know, I talked it over, I recommended five years for a moratorium, just to let them have a chance to get things done. The reason I want five years instead of two years is because of the permitting and design and construction process. I mean, when I was building shopping centers, my major client said, what takes you people so long in Florida? You can't ever seem to get anything approved. The City of Treasure Island's prime example. We just cannot seem to get things moving along, and I'd like to have these guys have five years in order to design a project, long timeframe, permit a project, because usually, you have to go through the DOT, City of Treasure Island, Southwest Florida Water Management District, and then you got to find a good, decent contractor to build the thing. By the time it's over and done with, we're looking at two years just to permit and build it. With a two-year moratorium, as soon as you get your project done, you're getting hit with a impact fee on the increase in the size of your project. I think five years would be a much better solution for these, but even if you went to four, like Mr. Suzan said, it would give these guys a chance, and maybe somebody would do something here in Treasure Island, because after living here for 39 years, our central business district has not changed, other than what the storm did to it, and other the fact that the old Pirate Square has been torn down. Thanks, and give four years a chance. Thanks.
Thank you, Richard. See, Clerk, would you make note that Granicus is not following the same consent agenda?
I will look into it.
All right, thank you. All right, so now-
Does Wes have any comments?
Okay. Once again, this was H5, so, all right. So we, that's our public comment? No. Okay. So let's bring it back here. Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. One is related to the analysis and discussion that was written up on here. We said, the county has been notified of the city's intent to waive collection of fees for a period of 24 months, and have not raised any objection. Is that, is that still the case?
In my opinion, yes, because they have, I've expressed it to their attorneys, we did some conference calls, we let them know what's going on. This is a new law that requires the interlocal agreement, so I don't think they have a final position, but the tentative position was they raised no legal concerns. And generally, with local government law, you know, when you talk about federal laws, there has to be a basis for everything the federal government does. Like, what's the law that allows the federal government to do that? With state and local law, the law is basically, local governments and state governments are free to do things unless there's a law saying they can't. And so, I have not identified what law it is that they could potentially cite that says that we can't waive, or we can't postpone, or we can't have a delayed start date for the collection of fees. And so, I don't think they do either.
Okay, and I think the point, I guess I'm trying to make here is, do we have a right to waive the county's portion of the fees? I can understand, we can waive our own fees, but can we waive the county's fees as well?
My legal, my legal opinion is, it's really one fee split down the middle, and if the fee itself is not collected, then they get 50% of nothing that's collected, which means they get nothing. Now, if they counter us and come back with a legal argument and say, no, here's the legal argument of why you need to start collecting these fees, obviously, I'll bring that to you guys, I'll give you my legal opinion, you can act herein, therein. But the resolution, all resolutions are temporary in nature. You could say this is two years, three years, four years, five years, but six months from now, Pinellas County comes to us and says, no, we have a legal argument of why we think you need to be collecting it now. I'll give you my legal advice, and then you can make the final determination. This doesn't actually lock you in for two years or four years. It's just an expression of the will of the commission to direct staff not to collect the fee for a period of time.
And that was, Arden, basically exactly what I was gonna ask. Or, sorry, Commissioner Dickey.
Like I said, if they give a formal opinion, and remember, we're really talking about two different groups. You got the county staff attorneys, and then you got the commission, which has the ultimate authority. They have not, from what I understand, had a final opinion on this issue. It's not been publicly expressed, certainly not as a group, but if it does, then I'll bring it to you immediately.
I mean, I don't, to me, I mean, just my opinion is, whether it's two or it's four, as long as we can come back and make that change, if the county comes to us, so that if they say, hey, you can not collect your half, but we want our half, that we are able to come back and say, okay, we're still not going to collect our half, if that's our decision, but if, you know-
We wouldn't be collecting anything.
No, no, no. My point is, is if the county decides that, because again, it's a new law, so if a year down the road, the county says, no, you have to at least collect our portion of it, that we're not having to pay for that out of pocket, meaning our city, as long as we're covered on that, and it can be come back and revisited, to me, I mean, I don't have a problem with doing four years.
So if I may put my comments on record, on my walking route, commercial properties are currently closed for business and/or closed and for sale. Of course, Thunderbird, Sands, both sides of downtown, all of the Gators property, Silver Sands of Treasure Island, Shake Shack, Tropic Terrace, Dehession, McDonald's property, Treasure Shores, Seahorse cottages has been torn down, Suncrest has been torn down, Caddy's, Sunset Beach House, Blue Waters, Sunset Inn and cottages, and the Bunglos. So in two years is not enough time. So I hope the commission could agree with me on at least four years. And the main question is, why are we adding fees to development when we don't have development, and we want development to happen? This is counterproductive, and it will set us back. Thank you.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. We please call roll.
Can you repeat the motion, just for the record, because it's a, it's the resolution as amended to four years, correct? Just want to make sure that's clear for the record.
I move to approve imposing a 48th month or four-year waiver of fees on the multimodal impact fees.
That's clear.
Okay.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure, because there was obviously a lot of conversation.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Suzan?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to I3, which is H3 for everyone else. Second reading and public hearing on ordinance 2025-10.
Ordinance 2025-10, an ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2025 general fund budget to recognize insurance proceeds of $2,526,077.83 for hurricane damages, providing severability, conflict, and an effective date.
Do we have a motion, please?
I'm sorry. I move to approve and adopt ordinance 2025-10 at this second and final reading and public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any public hearing? No public hearing, so let's move on. Any questions up here? All right, let's go ahead and take a roll call.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Suzan?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.?
Aye.
Thank you.
I4, second reading to approve ordinance number 2025-11.
Ordinance 2025-11, to fund disaster financial recovery services for Q4 fiscal year 2025 in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve and adopt ordinance number 2025-11 at this second final public hearing.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any public comments? Wes, please come up.
I second the motion. You just got a little ahead of yourself, but that's all right. Anyway, a second.
Wes Evans, Isla Palms, I believe our, our sheets are off as well, because I, what you're doing right now is H5 on ours, and you're called it as H4 up there. But anyway, I-
Sorry, no, they are off. That's why, yeah, you are correct.
All right. So, so we are talking about the $50,000 for the grant writing?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to say again, we've talked about this before, that the city had the option of hiring a full-time grant writer, a part-time grant writer, or a grant-writing firm that gets paid on a percentage of basis of what they bring in on their grant writing. And of course, the City of Treasure Island chose to hire a full-time grant writer, and then the following week, decided we should also pay that firm to help write grants. Grants aren't just money that they're handing to us with nothing attached to it. If you go for a grant that's $2 million, you don't get $2 million and free money. That's 70, 70 to 80% of the million or 2 million is paid for. That means there's 20% of that the city has to pay for. So if we have a full-time grant writer, just writing, trying to get grants, I'm not against getting grants. We should go for grants that we need, but we don't need people trying to get us more transportation study grants. We don't need a bridge that goes over Gulf Boulevard that we can get a $10 million grant for, but ends up costing us $2 million. I just want the city to keep that in mind, that we have to pay 20 or 30% of the money that comes in for these grants. So I don't, I'm talking in circles right now. We've gone over this for weeks. Let's just start spending our money wisely, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close public comment. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion up here?
No.
Hearing? None.
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, I voiced my disagreement with this. I somewhat agree with what Wes just said. I don't understand why we hired a full-time grant writer plus a grant consultant, and at the same time, the grant consultant is not even paid on like a performance basis, which, that's the way I would do it if I was gonna hire a consultant. I'd only pay them if they're gonna perform. And the other thing is, this is $50,000 till the end of the budget, which is, what, two months? So, I mean, if we're gonna spend $50,000 in two months after we just hired a full-time grant writer, it just, it doesn't make any sense to me. And lastly, if we don't spend the money, and we roll it over, and then we, you know, do another $50,000 next year, that's $100,000. I just, it just baffles me how we need a town of our size. I understand there's a lot of grants out there. I want to get grants. I love grants, but, you know, why we're doubling up here, and why we're, and also, the contract is not performance-based. So, that's my comments.
Is there a way, I guess this is probably an attorney question, is there a way to, I know the answer to this probably, to make it performance-based?
Absolutely, yeah. You have the free authority to design the contract how you'd like. Now, I'm not sure the origin of this contract, but that just might be their model, and they say, this is how we do it, and if not, you know, go to the next guy. So I'm not an expert on, you know, if it's a great contract in terms of the value, but you absolutely have the authority to counter the contract with some kind of incentive pay. And, you know, it's a good concern, because it might just be one of those things where they're giving you some advice that the grants writer has already, but I don't, I haven't dived into it. I'm happy to do it if you wanted me to, so.
I wasn't involved in the contract negotiations or discussions at all on this, so I- I wasn't involved in the contract negotiations or discussions at all on this, so I don't know the answer to the question, but maybe Joan Goodrich, if you could offer any insight on that.
Well, I mean, at the Rebuild TI committee meeting that I attended, they, it was, said that it was not performance-based.
Yeah.
So that's where I'm getting that from.
Sure. I guess the question really is, was that discussed as part of the contract negotiations, the idea of being a performance-based? You get us, you help us get these grants, and, you know, then we pay you as opposed to we pay you for your services regardless of whether or not we get the grant? I think that's the question.
Again, good evening, Joan Goodrich, from your Office of Economic Development. So again, just for this particular service for us, it's broader than simply grant writing. It's focused on specialized professional services for us with disaster financial recovery services, which includes grant writing, grant administration, the very complicated world of federal grants as it relates to disaster financial recovery. So basically, the contract that you all had approved is not performance-based. It's on-demand, on-call for the City of Treasure Island. So should we find ourselves that we need the Burquest Recovery Services, then there is a hourly fee that they'll charge us based on whatever component to their team, the personnel from their team that we'll be using. We mentioned the hazard mitigation grant applications that we had submitted. So part of that grant application looked at compliance, and so we obtained a quote that we actually put into that grant application for hazard mitigation. So should we find ourselves awarded, and we should need this particular professional service for that grant pool and fund, then we've got them on-call, on-demand. So it's more on-call, on-demand than it is retainer. It's not a retainer contract that we've put in place, but pay for performance is not a part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Can I possibly go last? Is that possible?
I don't know if that's in the code of the rules. I could double-check real quick. I think it is supposed to be alphabetical.
Just because I'm reading through it again, that's the only reason I'm asking.
It's by, in the board rules, it's by person who motions, the person who seconds, and then in district order.
So you can rescind the motion and then be last.
No, I'll vote. I'm going to say no. No. Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
No.
Commissioner Sazan.
Aye.
Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Okay, and at least for my peace of mind and yours as well, I refreshed my computer, and I'm back to normal. What normal is, you know, it's, so, all right, H four, second reading, ordinance 2025-12.
No.
Yeah, we're on H six now.
First reading of public ordinance 2025-6, budget amendment to fund Treasure Bay tennis, is that where we're at?
No, it's supposed to be H four. It's the $14,000 that we received. Mine were off, which now that I'm back on, I'm now year off.
Oh, did we skip it?
I don't remember.
Oh, yeah.
I see it.
There it is.
Second reading of 2025-12, budget amendment to recognize insurance proceeds in the amount of $14,126,059.
$14,000.
$14,126,059. So used to the bigger numbers. $14,126,059 for hurricane damages.
All right, do we have a motion, please?
I move to approve and adopt ordinance number 2025-12 at this second and final public hearing.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment? No public comment. Any discussion up here? Nope. So roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Aye.
Commissioner Sazan.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, H six, first reading and public hearing on ordinance 2025-06.
Ordinance 2025-06, budget amendment to fund Treasure Bay tennis court resurfacing and fence replacement in an amount not to exceed $231,650.
I make a motion to approve ordinance... I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2025-06 at this first public hearing, and to schedule ordinance for a second and final reading at the August 19, 2025 commission meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Staff, Kathy.
Good evening. The city was awarded a hurricane relief funding commitment from the United States Tennis Florida Foundation for repairs from hurricane damage to our Treasure Bay facility. The cost of that funding commitment is up to $281,650, and is included in the resurfacing of our clay courts, the repairs to our tennis court fence, as well as to any electrical damage we had from flooding from Helene. The, well, the city issued RFP 13, it was 25-013, and it was for the clay tennis court resurfacing. And we've also issued ITB 25-014, which was for the fence replacement for the tennis court. I have before you on 25-013 tonight, and will be bringing before you 25-014 at the next meeting. The budget, oh, sorry, the budget amendment allocates funding in the amount not to exceed $231,650. We do have $50,000 allocated in fiscal year 25 for the asphalt tennis court fencing, seven and eight. The expenditures will be reimbursed through the funding commitment from the USTA, and the revenues will be recognized once we have been reimbursed.
Any questions for Kathy?
Nope.
Thank you, Kathy. Any public comment? Hearing no public comment. Any discussion up here? No. Let's go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Sazan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on, motion to approve city manager purchase authority of $59,900 to J Courts Incorporated.
I move and approve and authorize city manager's purchase authority to J Courts Incorporated, amount of $59,900, to resurface the clay tennis courts at Treasure Bay Golf and Tennis Facility.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy.
The city received two quotes for this RFP, one from J Courts, Inc., and one from Armor Courts. Armor Courts bid was considered to be incomplete. The quote from J Courts also includes the resurfacing of all eight courts, which are courts one through six, nine, and 10, as well as replacing all the net posts with aluminum post and outside cranks. So staff is recommending that we provide this bid to J Courts in the amount of the $59,900, and the funds, again, will be reimbursed through the ordinance 2025-06.
Any question for staff?
I have a question. In the, under the funding section, the write-up on this, we mentioned the city has a maximum of eight months to complete the repairs. When does that eight months start?
Well, it started when we received the letter, and it expires December 31st.
Will we be able to complete?
Definitely. We have the, will be, we have this, and we're bringing the bid for the tennis courts at the next meeting. So we should be able, once this ordinance is read again for the budget amendment, which will be also at the August 19 meeting. I know the fence company is ready to go and should be, once permitting is done and they get the approval, we should be able to have them start. Our hope is to have the fence go first before we resurface the courts. So I'm hoping to have everything done by October, November.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kathy. Do we have any public comment? Hearing none. We'll close public comment. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Sazan.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
Thank you.
H eight, resolution 2025-13.
Commissioner, you have several committees that you need to appoint members for. August is typically when we do this. I, we did reach out to the applicants, and some of them may be here. I don't know how you want to proceed, but we could go committee by committee. We could start with planning and zoning, and then move on to those applicants.
Could I actually be recognized for one second, Mayor?
Sure.
I actually would like to make a motion for District One. I move to remove Kara Sims from her position as a member of the Planning and Zoning Board, District One of the City of Treasure Island, effective immediately. In conjunction, I, with this removal, I would also like to move to appoint alternate member Mark Strajeski as a member of the Planning and Zoning Board, effective immediately. This action is necessary to maintain the integrity and effectiveness of this board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Do we have any public comment? Hearing none. We'll close that. Any further discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Please call, roll.
Vice Mayor Vasquez.
Aye.
Commissioner Sazan.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey.
Aye.
Mayor Doctor.
Aye.
All right, so back to the annual appointments, and yes, let's take them.
Does this mean we have two openings for that?
I was just going to say, I believe this leaves us with an opening for a alternate on planning and zoning. So we would need one at-large and one alternate. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So your applicants are Billingsley, Bonvelore, and Accree. I don't know if any of them are here, but would like to speak.
Yes, we do. I have Jennifer Bonvelore. How do you, every time you come, how do you pronounce that?
The easy way to pronounce that is bon velour, like the fabric.
Bon velour.
But if you want to do it the French way, it's vouloir.
Okay, thank you.
So, good evening, Jennifer Bonvelore, 11325 Seventh Street East in Treasure Island. Good evening, Mayor. Good evenings, members of the city council, city manager. Nice to meet you, and all, all. Last time I was here, it's not my notes, but last time I was here, I actually did a, like, 10-deck PowerPoint. I'm not going to bore you tonight with that. But I will share with you my continued interest in serving this board. When you appointed me just a few months ago, I was honored to accept the challenge of filling the remainder of a vacant term. In that short time, I have dedicated myself to learning the board's procedures, understanding our city ordinances, and doing my best to adhere to the code and procedures, and the comp plan, of course, while contributing thoughtfully to every discussion. While my time has been brief, I believe I have demonstrated my commitment and readiness to serve this community effectively. My experience as both a former councilwoman and as a member of the Planning and Zoning Board in Smithfield, Rhode Island, a city of over 20,000 people, where I was also elected, has given me valuable insight into municipal government policy development, which I have been able to apply during my tenure with the Treasure Island Commission. I have been a dedicated resident of this city for eight years. I am deeply invested in its future, because, as my husband and I say, it's from our house to the cemetery. My only agenda is to do what's best for this city and its residents. I am not a real estate agent. I am not a contractor. I am not a developer, nor do I have any related businesses or family members with related businesses. And that's not to say anybody else does. I'm just letting you know who I am. And that allows me to approach every decision with complete impartiality. I understand the previous appointment in my district was made based on a precedent for those who had an at-large position. He was given the full-time position. I respectfully ask that you also consider my prior two applications to the board, and then my now-proven dedication during my short tenure in this role. My passion has only grown stronger during my time in this role, and I have enjoyed working alongside the other members of this role, for sure. Tonight, you have a decision to make about the future of this board. I am confident that my experience over the past several months has prepared me to be effective, long-term member, and I'm eager to contribute, continue to contribute my perspective and energy to ensure our city remains a great place to live and work. Thank you for your time and opportunity, allowing me to have served, and I hope that I will continue to be able to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Billingsley.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dan Billingsley. I live at 13 Island Drive on Paradise Island. Thank you for considering my application. For the last 16 years, I've been a licensed contractor. I've been in the contracting world for 26 years, third generation. I know the codes and compliance in the area. As of recent, I was, the last three years, I was the Jazz Club president at St. John Vianney down the street until the hurricane took us out. I was also on the capital development board there. We had a lot of stuff in works, so I'm used to dealing with the boards on development projects. And I also had served on the United Way board for three years. So I want to just keep it short and sweet. I'm just looking to get back to my community. I still have young kids in the area. We're rebuilding our house from the hurricane. And since my vacancy opened up from the St. John's, I feel it's a good opportunity for me to get back. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, let's go down. Vala Accree.
Hi, Valerie Akery. I live at 12300 Fifth Street East on Isla Capri. I have lived in Treasure Island for 11 years. I have served on the code enforcement board. I have been president of the Isla Capri Civic Association previously for four years. And I am very, I'm looking forward to serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm looking forward to serving my community, short and sweet.
Thank you, Val.
Can I make a motion for the position?
Yes, so we are, so we need to fill what positions and in which districts?
It's an at-large position and an alternate position, so there's no district requirement.
Okay.
I make a motion of selecting Daniel Billingsley to Planning and Zoning Board, LPA, for the at-large member.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment? Okay, hearing none. Back to any discussion up here.
I'm not sure how we're going to do this, because I was going to motion Jennifer for the same thing, but I guess we have to vote on this first, motion first.
We would vote on this.
Yeah, technically, you just take up one motion, but in discussion, you can indicate that, hey, I'd rather have this person, you know, then it's one motion at a time. But honestly, you know, you can kind of broadcast that you'll vote no, and make a follow-up motion, and then hopefully, you know, that could affect everybody else's votes accordingly, so.
Yeah, and again, I'm, I always hate when we have two positions and one, and three applicants, because I appreciate very much all of them coming forward and wanting to volunteer to do this work, this unpaid, unpaid work. But having said that, Jennifer has served as an alternate. I think she wants to be at-large representative now, and I, and I, you know, I would support her for that, and I would support Daniel to be the, to take her place as the alternate.
Okay, yeah, it's always confusing when we get up here with these board positions and multiple boards and fewer or more openings. So what I'm hearing is that you're doing, you're saying Jennifer for the at-large?
Yes.
And Billingsley, Daniel Billingsley, would be the alternate.
Right.
And I'm more on the Billingsley for at-large, and Val Accree for alternate.
And I agree with Tammy.
I would agree with that, too. So knowing it's 3-2, you could just, I mean, save yourself time, make one encompassing motion, if it is a 3-2 split, which
It is.
Discussion might indicate that. So for the sake of time, somebody can make a motion to just do it accordingly.
So would he need to rescind his motion first?
Correct, yes.
I make a motion of, I'd like to rescind my motion.
Okay, and was a second? And was a second?
All right, I would like, I move to elect Daniel Billingsley for the at-large position for P&amp;Z and LPA, and Valerie Accree for the alternate position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion up here? Any public comments?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Because this is a public forum and it's being recorded, frankly, I'm shocked and disappointed. I don't know any of you personally. I've done a very good job at what I believe. Matter of fact, in many cases, I have been the lone nay vote in variances coming up to the board. So I wouldn't rubber stamp things. I've taken a lot of thought into what I've done. And I've heard a lot of sideline comment that if they're spending, as an example, if they're spending a lot of money, they should be able to get what they want. I don't believe in that. I believe it should be the best for the town and the best for the community and following the code and following our comprehensive plan. And I feel like I... I don't know what you know about Kara. I don't know why you would do that. I simply met her on the board. It seems, it just, this doesn't seem kosher. And I'm, it's very disappointing, and I think if members of the community would look at our zoning board meetings and look at what you guys are doing tonight, after, by the way, I was told, oh, don't worry, I know it's only a few months stint, but when you come back, our precedent is we'll, we'll put you in the at-large position. It's just, it's hypocritical, and it's disappointing, and it's not doing the best for the community. Now, like I said, I don't know any of you. I have, except for John, who you and I have only spoke a few times. This was in the past, prior to the hurricane, for landscaping reasons. But despite the fact, I respectfully ask you to reconsider because it's, it's just for people that want to do the best for the community. And you're kind of undermining what you say you want to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Discussion up here?
Thank you.
Come on, Richard. Come on.
Thank you.
Richard here. Since I am the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board, I just want to do, give my two cents. I want to compliment Jennifer. She has done a great job in the, I believe, two months she's been there. I do know her. And she's actually what we need on the board. She is not one of these people that will just go along with everybody. So, quite frankly, I would, I don't know either of the two other applicants personally, but I would like to say that I support Jennifer Bonvelore for the, for the full-time position. She is, right now, she is not an alternate. She is a full-time position from, correct me if I'm wrong, Paradise?
Palms.
Or Palms?
I think Palms.
Palms. Okay. Let's put this way. I get everybody mixed up because the at-larges can be from anywhere, but then we have one person from each district. Anyway, you know, I'm sure that, let's put it this way, everybody's done a pretty good job over the many years that I volunteered here. Jennifer has done a really good job over the two meetings they, they've been here. We do need continuity for the board, and I just want to say, if you could see fit to keep her at the current position for her district and have one of the other two for the alternate. Thank you.
Is Jennifer a at-large now?
Yes, she current, she is filling the remainder of another term, but she is in an at-large position.
Okay. Yeah, I, I do agree with some of the statements that I've heard and from Jennifer as well that, you know, she came on and took on a alternate position, but it only had a couple of months available to it. And, and yes, we usually, if you're performing well and the president of the board says that you are, it would be in your direction, and I would vote that way. And so, it always gets very awkward here when we're trying to decide who does what and where. So, I don't know with three people, is it best to, well, we got to do something with this motion, but we can take care of that in a second, to actually vote individual by individual?
Absolutely, yeah, you can do that. You can vote that way.
Yeah, we could do that. So we would just go through each commissioner, and they would say the name that they prefer for...
One, two, and three. One, two, and three. One, two, and three, basically.
Okay, we'll start with, because you need to fill an at-large position and an alternate position, so.
Okay, so...
We can start with the at-large.
Let's first remove the, the motion that we had.
I'll withdraw my motion.
If we can, thank you. And now, let's...
Someone actually explained to me, maybe I should know this.
Sorry.
Alternate and, and what, at-large?
Alternate only votes if someone's absent.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
But do we...
Do they go to every meeting?
Yes, they participate.
They're allowed to debate and converse, but they can only vote in the absence of a...
And from speaking to Richard quite a few times, because it is such a large board, it's pretty frequent that there is at least one person absent, one to two people. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, I don't know where you're at, but correct me if I'm wrong, that typically, because it's a large board, there, there's usually a absent person or sometime, frequently, an absent person where an alternate would speak up or sit in. Am I correct? That's what you've told me before.
Well, we are always able to get, because there's nine attendees. To get a quorum, we only need four. But like our meeting in July, we had two absentee members. So, in that case, both Mark and Gary voted. And so, like you just said, Tammy, it's, it's a lot that, we always have a quorum, but usually the alternates do get to vote.
Thank you for clarifying that.
All right, so let's, let's take that vote.
Okay.
And do we want to start? Do we, I don't know.
I'm going to go in district order.
Okay.
With the mayor last. Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Daniel Billingsley for at-large, Valerie Accree for alternate.
Commissioner Clark?
Same.
Commissioner Sazan?
Same.
Commissioner Dickey?
Jennifer, at-large, and Daniel, alternate.
And Mayor Dr.
Jennifer, at-large, and Val Accree as the alternate.
Okay, so that's going to be Billingsley for the at-large seat and Mr. Accree for the alternate position. Oh, it's three. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And then we can just have a motion so moved to have it adopted?
Just a so-move?
Or move, move adoption?
Move adoption of Billingsley for at-large and Valerie Accree for alternate for the Planning and Zoning and LPA board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And then the next committee is going to be Code Enforcement. You have an at-large member and an alternate member position.
And is Dana Ball here? Eva de Vries?
I just wanted to say good evening to the City Council and thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Eva De Vries. I'm a longtime property owner in Treasure Island and currently serve as board president at the Crystal Palms Resort, as well as other commercial associations. I've been in the community support roles for over 13 years with hands-on experience in ownership, compliance, property management, and conflict resolution. Professionally, I come from a background in public records research and private investigation, which has given me a strong fact-based approach to evaluate complex issues fairly and objectively. I care deeply about maintaining the safety of parents and overall quality of life that makes Treasure Island such a special place to live or visit. I'd be honored to, to support the mission of the Code Enforcement Board and help ensure the compliance efforts remain fair, constructive, community, and community-focused. Thank you for your time and consideration. And I'd like to add that I'd like to be considered for the at-large position. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Jeffrey Bannon here?
Jeffrey Bannon, 1146 Ninth Street, Isle of Palms. I'd like to be considered for the, for the position. In my past life, I've had 50, over 50 years of decision-making, and I'm not afraid to do that, and nor do I go with the flow, however it has to be. I, I was in the restaurant business, and my team, we owned over 11 restaurants in Manhattan at one time. So I'm used to dealing with people, I'm used to dealing with positions and violations and such. I've also spent 20 years, one of the founders of the Pelham Community Rowing Association in West Chester County, where I was chairman of the boathouse. And I, like I said, I held that position for over 20 years. So, I've been living here for five years, been coming to Treasure Island for over 30. It's always been my wife's and my favorite place. And so we brought our two sons, who also live here on the island. We, when we landed here finally, we said to each other, paradise. And it is. It is. And that's why I, I volunteered for the board, because I, I'd like to bring it back to where it was when I came here five years ago. This is a magnificent place. It needs to be fine-tuned, more than fine-tuned, but it needs somebody that's not afraid to get their hands dirty, and it has to be done. So, I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Is Thomas Santarlos?
My name is Dr. Thomas Santarlos. I own property at 10116 Gulf Boulevard, Unit 401 West. I believe that Code Enforcement is a critical component to city government. It's important that we have effective Code Enforcement people working so that the residents, the business owners, and the people who visit this city can take pride in coming here, living here, and working here. My background consists of various boards around the state of Florida. I've served as a vice chairman for the Community Redevelopment Agency in Bartow. I've also served as a vice chairman for the Historic Resources Review Board in Tampa, and approximately 10 years as a Code Enforcement magistrate in Hillsborough County, handling the red light cameras, the school zone cameras, taxi cabs, and the Uber and lifts. I was appointed by the Board of County Commissioners there to fill one term and been reappointed two or three times since then. And I would ask that you would consider my application, and I'll serve in whatever capacity you believe that I can best serve the city of Treasure Island. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. All right, so what positions do we have available?
We have an at-large member and an alternate member. We could go through the same process if you wanted, or if there are no comments or anything.
I do have a question. Two of the four candidates are not residents. They do own property here. Is, is being a resident a requisite for holding one of these positions?
I believe it's acceptable to be a property owner. A property owner?
A property owner, okay. Thank you.
And just to clarify on that one, I actually spoke to Ms. De Vries, and her and her husband do live, they do stay in their condo that they have here, like their allotted time that they have. And they spend a lot of time on Treasure Island. She sits on the board and such, because I was curious about the same exact thing. But they actually do live here a lot of time, a lot of the time. I guess you would almost say similar to a snowboard, snowbird.
Does, again, along those lines, and I guess I would ask this of Eva, being that you don't live here, where do you live when you don't live here? Would you not be available?
Well, actually, I live in San Antonio.
Okay, that's, that's good enough. Thank you. Thank you. And I, and I do know where Thomas lives. He lives in Riverview? Is that correct? Okay. Thank you. That's the only thing I had. Mayor Dr.
And do we want to do it the same way?
I think that's the best.
Yeah. Okay.
So I'm going to start with the at-large member. Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Eva De Vries.
Commissioner Clark?
Dana Ball.
Commissioner Sazan?
Eva De Vries.
Commissioner Dickey?
Eva.
And Mayor Dr.
Eva.
Okay, that's going to be De Vries for your at-large member, and we'll take a motion for both at the end. So moving forward to your alternate, Vice Mayor Vasquez?
I'd say Jeffrey, was it Bannon? Is that pronouncing right? Yes.
Commissioner Clark?
Jeffrey.
Commissioner Sazan?
Jeffrey.
Commissioner Dickey?
Thomas Santarias.
Mayor Dr.
Jeffrey.
Okay, so that's going to be Bannon for that one.
Yes.
So, for your at-large member, that's De Vries, and for your alternate member, that's Bannon. And if I could just get a motion confirming that.
I move to confirm Eva De Vries as an at-large member of the Code Enforcement Board and Jeffrey Bannon as the alternate.
We have a motion and a second? Thank you. Do we have any comment? Public comment? Closed public comment? Any further discussion up here?
Nope.
Nope. Let's go ahead and take a vote?
Do, please. Oh, no, it's a resolution, I'm sorry. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Sazan?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the Lyft organization.
So for Lyft, you actually have three vacancies, but only two applicants. So it's not going to interfere with quorum requirements, but unless you don't want to pick one of these applicants, I mean, I don't know if they're here tonight, but you have more vacancies than you do applicants.
Is Carlos here? And is Judy here?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Judy Pardone. I live in your district. Commissioner Vasquez, I live on the Isle of Capri, 1165 Isle of Capri Circle South. My husband and I have owned property here in Treasure Island since 2017, and we've been full-time residents for three years. The reason I'm very interested in this position is to be able to give back to this fantastic community. Since living here full-time, I joined the Beach Ambassadors, and I also was able to come over to City Hall and volunteer to help get essential items to people who wound up with absolutely nothing. And some of the stories I heard and the people I met made me want to help even more. As far as my professional background goes, we moved here from Chicago. I was in the press office of two Illinois governors, and I worked at the commuter rail system, which had its own police department and a lot of issues related to mental health and homelessness and people that were living in train stations. And so, I learned a lot about how to solve some of those problems. Obviously, you can't solve all of them, but having our own police department prepared me pretty well for that. And I also worked in Cook County Sheriff Tom Dart's office, in the executive office. Part of my responsibilities were to work... Part of my responsibilities were to work on the tier with 40 pregnant women who were in custody, and helping them with not only their pregnancies and their delivery, but working with a lot of charitable organizations that came together to help them with their babies when they returned to the community for about five years. So my experience from that, I think, prepares me well to be an asset and help out, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And it's a great organization.
That's what I got ready to say. Thank you so much for applying, because that's a tough, that's a tough position, too, and that's wonderful. LIFT has done a lot for the community in the last few years, so thank you for applying.
All right. So I think that this one is relatively easy. We just need to make the motion to cement it.
And I move to appoint Judy, is it Pardono?
Pardone.
Pardone, and Carlos Miro, as an at-large member of the LIFT Board of Treasure Island.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll close public comment. Any further discussion here? Nope. Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Suzanne?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Doctor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and that is the end of Item H8, correct? All right. Moving on to number nine. Community development staff request to include full-time floodplain manager and full-time code supervisor to relieve current employees and having responsibility of two different So this would, would you have to take an ordinance on this? I know you and I discussed this a little earlier today, but it's just basically moving forward with the two positions, correct?
Yes, sir. I don't think it requires an ordinance, does it?
No. Okay. Not unless it would impact budget.
If it was a budget amendment, yes, it would only be a budget amendment if the numbers truly changed what was pre-authorized when you passed the budget last year.
Okay. So we're good to go, then? Yep, absolutely. Okay, so a motion, please.
I move to approve the request for full-time floodplain manager and full-time code supervisor.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment? Come on up, Mark.
Mark Hoey, District 3. Just a quick one. It was news to us from our city manager that he's going to bring some consultant activity to CDD to kind of go through and determine just what do we need and all that. So why are we hiring two people now? These aren't open positions, but we're hiring them now, and we haven't really gotten a chance to go through and look at this with new eyes. So seems like it's out of order.
Sarah Pennington, District 2. Yes, that's the exact thoughts that I had, that Mr. Hoey just got up here and said, when our new city manager had mentioned earlier, we're going to be doing a full assessment of our permits department, Community Development Department. I thought maybe we should, as he likes to say, put the pause or hit the brake pedal on hiring any new hires for our department until we've gone through and actually done that assessment. Maybe we don't need more people. Maybe we need the right people. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying we don't know yet what we actually need in that department. So it might be a good idea to just wait until we have that information to make a better decision. Thank you.
Would you like to address this?
Sure. And I'm addressing my five bosses. I appreciate all the public comment and the history lessons I've gotten so far, and I can see where the confusion may lie. Everybody know who Stevie Wonder is? Great musician, but really doesn't have great visual acuity. I feel very comfortable with years and decades of human resources and personnel background of making an initial assessment that we need more headcount to clear a backlog. We are down two people from three weeks ago when I started in CDD, both resignations, just for clarity. So I can't move you in any great direction to clear the backlog without some more headcount. I already know that. You have no floodplains manager, and what's your largest backlog in CDD?
Floodplain manager.
Yes, sir. Correct answer. So, and you also have another person doing double duty, so I would like to alleviate that. I am wide open and confident in the assessment capability of the consultant I'm bringing in to help me with processes, procedures, and he might look at me and say, Mr. Van Zant, you need one or two more, or do this with a consultant for 90 days, alleviate this, and then you can drop one. But I know without any doubt in my military mind that if you want to start clearing this backlog and seeing some headway, I've got two more months in this fiscal year, and I need to be moving in that direction.
Andrew Vacy, District 2. I appreciate the color and your perspective from that. As residents, we've been through the whole gamut with the CDD. Okay? It started with Elevate TI, then it went through permitting. Many members of this commission provided Jacobs to come in and try to staff up. Prior city manager didn't want to staff up. We have been through staffing issues with CDD, the people that are on it, the agenda that those folks have on it, getting additional heads outsourced quickly after the hurricane so that we could move permitting through. And one of the things that everyone talked about at that point was to look at the whole permitting process at the time. You're a very process organization guy, so let's talk a minute about the process. We had a whole slug of permits coming in. We had a variety of needs that people had, wiped out of your house, able to come back and put some drywall in. We had a whole range of them. We knew what was going to happen then, after the hurricane hit. We knew that you were going to need to have permit applications put in, they would be reviewed, there would be inspections, there would be closeout, there would be FEMA audit. There was a whole process. We knew there was going to be the people who could do them quickly, and the people that needed more time, because they were going to elevate, and the people that were going to rebuild. We knew all this. So we get to this point where we're at the end of a fiscal year. Instead of having somebody come in who this commission made available to spend the money during FEMA paying for it with an organization, we got a third, the staff was asked for a one-year contract, they gave a 30-day contract. Then they complained that the company couldn't staff up. Well, for anybody that's been in business, how do you commit and staff up when somebody's giving you a 30-day contract and you're trying to move eight, or 10, or 12 heads up here? Couldn't do it. Then he used them so lightly that when they finished the 30-day window, they still had half the value of that contract left. So then the mayor comes in and says, go ahead and get a year contract to the city manager and get staffed up and outsourced. So they don't want to do it. Then they come back and, at the same time, throw in 130, 150, 180, whatever it was. Oh, we want to staff up with outsourced people. So this commission votes, no, we're not going to, you've got to come in and explain to us what these people are going to do. So then they come in and say, we're going to add all this headcount, we need to go through September 30th, and we have floodplain managers in. Jacobs brought floodplain managers. The person here doing the floodplain management caused a lot of the problems, which was the bottleneck, that then somebody from the fire department had to go figure out what was going on there. So we went through that. Then we went through the community development director resigning. Then we had that person resign but stick around. Then we went through a temporary city manager hiring a tempor, hiring a CDD person who is a wonderful person, fine person, doesn't have CDD capability at all. So now we're back here, two months before budget, and we're adding staff. So we had to come back a second round for different outsourced people, even though almost a year ago, when we were all waiting for permits, we had a one-year solution served out, nobody took it. I'm not saying it's you, because you were not here, but I'm just giving you the flavor of what all of us have been through with this, and with particularly this department, because they handle permits. Okay? And the permitting process has been awful. Option one versus option two, awful. Okay? People worked hard. Commissioner Dickey was in there. People worked hard, but they were dealt a bad hand. Okay? And we've all lived through it, and we're done with it. So now you come in, and I applaud you for saying, I want to evaluate and see what I have. Totally makes sense. On the other, and you're right, you need the help. But to do this, and on the one hand, tell us, oh, I got to evaluate and put in, and oh, I got to have these people, oh, I got to outsource these people who are already here since September 30th, and they got voted no, because nobody told us, is insanity going on around here? And you guys can all do better. You've got to explain it. The reason that we get up here and complain about this is we've seen all this. This isn't like, we don't know what's going on, we haven't lived through it, it hasn't touched us, and then we're just up here saying, no. We've lived through it. We've seen it. And you have to understand that of where we're coming from when we get on this. And that is the history of what's happened here, and I think you should hold this off, and you should extend your people, and you should get your budget done, and then justify it that way when you get the right people in there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew. Any other comments? Okay, we'll close public comment. Do we have any comments from the staff, or from the Commissioners?
Yeah, I'll make, I, in my Thursday, last Thursday meeting with the city manager, asked the exact same question that Mark, and I believe it was Sarah, I think, that got up, and I said, you know, why are we hiring full-time people when we're having a consultant come in and tell us what to do? And he used the same analogy that Stevie Wonder could see that we need, you know, this full-time floodplain manager and this other position. So, you know, I'm seeing movement on the trash, which we've never seen before. I'm seeing movement on TMM, which we've never seen before. So I got to, I got to, I got to give him some rope here and trust him on this one. You know, if I'm proven wrong, I'm proven wrong, but you know, that's where I'm at. I certainly understand your questions, because I had the exact same one. And that's just where I'm at.
And I would say, on the, I mean, the two positions you're asking for, the floodplain manager and code supervisor, we have one gentleman who's been doing the exact same job, I mean, two jobs, and being paid for one. And then we hear complaints of code not being enforced. We hear complaints of permitting not going as fast when, if you don't have the positions filled, you know, I do own a company. I own a couple of companies, and if I don't have certain positions filled, I can't move forward. Or if I do, it's going to be a lot slower, not nearly as effective as it could be as if I had all my positions filled. I don't even use the Stevie Wonder analogy. I just say it's common sense. You can do the, you can't do the job efficiently if you don't have the people there to do it, and we can't continue to ask one person to do two jobs. And so to me, again, if down the line, something changes, that doesn't mean we, you know, you can tweak and balance and do what we need to do, but right now, I think, you know, if we're going to complain about a problem, we have to be willing to fix it. That's my opinion.
I think that it goes from here. I know that our city manager basically said he's too short from just where he was, you know, a couple of weeks ago. What we did is we passed, about a month ago, we passed 90 days' worth of funding for contracted employees. That's part of why we're down low. So we basically would have given him the authority to bring up to that staff, that included our in-house folks and our contract folks. And so what we're saying is that, and I don't even know if these employees are these, I guess employees, are they the contract folks that are down, or in-house employees that are down? Because really, it's all the same money. It's just, are we going to hire them in as contractors, or are we going to hire them back in as full-time employees going forward? That's the only difference I see.
So your current staffing model, I've shared with each of you, you have six contract employees that expire on September 30th. And what I'm asking you for tonight is two additional employees, a floodplain manager, which you don't have that position. You have your principal planner, and that gentleman's been doing two roles. And you have a planning manager that's also been covering down on your code compliance supervisor position. Those would be two City of Treasure Island employees. And then when those six temporary people expire on September 30th, we'll be bringing you back three more. I got a color-coded document that would be full employees. And Mayor, when you and I were talking, this one was the wrong color in the previous edition.
Okay.
So just in full transparency, this is my most likely course of action. When the consultant comes in next Monday and begins his 60-day process, and as we continue to hammer out the budget through September, and as you hopefully and graciously allow me more time to spend with my staff and less time to spend with everybody else, I will have better recommendations in September. And as, if I can be allowed two more seconds, as a holistic 50,000-foot view, don't expect a budget that we adopt the end of September to be the budget for the whole fiscal year. We have grants we've applied for, we're asking for help from state, federal, county assets. Our income is yet an unknown, before you, or after you even adopt the millage rate. So we'll gain, some of this will come through. So I plan on bringing you at least one budget amendment in the next fiscal year, possibly two, as the picture develops and have longer than three weeks, and we get our staff in here and things like that. Thank you.
Okay, I guess what I'm asking, though, is you just said that we are too short from where we were.
Three weeks ago, I had two more people in CDD than I do today.
And those two people, were they in-house employees, or were they contractors?
They were in-house employees.
They were in-house, okay. So basically, what we're saying is that we want to bring back in those two, and we want to bring two more heads, and we want those heads to be permanent heads, and not...
Permanent heads, and do different jobs, floodplain manager and code compliance. But yes, sir, two employees have left in three weeks, and I'm asking to add two headcount back.
Okay. Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to add to the discussion is clearly these two areas that you've asked for additional help are where we need it the most. The two biggest complaints I get are about the slow permitting process and about codes not being enforced. I'm getting hit with a lot of those, and the biggest backlog that, when I've checked, when I've asked, that, in getting permits processed, is in the floodplain area. So, and I don't see that getting any better. And it's, you know, I'm not doing this, I'm not supporting this, because I think it's a, you know, we need to not have somebody work two jobs. I'm doing it because it's a major bottleneck in getting permits processed. So in that regard, if you were going to, you know, add two FTEs, this is where I would put them. But to make sure, I understand what you told Mayor Doctor, is you won't be filling these two other positions that have left. You're going to, you want to fill these two instead? Is that correct?
These are the two I'm asking to fill tonight, and then most likely course of action on your October 1st headcount, when the six contractors that are currently doing permit tech, permit tech, estimator, floodplain, floodplain, and appraiser, I will come back and ask for floodplain coordinator, zoning tech, and permit and codes tech, barring what flushes out through this assessment. This is a very fluid thing. I know we've got some areas to fix. I'm willing to work on those with your support, and we'll flesh out the rest as we move forward and move through our budget cycle.
And one other thing you said that caught my attention was you said that there's a 60-day period that you're talking about using a consultant to take a look at community development. Is that correct?
Yes. And that's more, he may bring suggestions on headcount and specific job descriptions, but I'm looking to simplify the processes and procedures so this isn't such a pain point for residents going through the process, whether they want to build... Whether they want to build a new home, whether it's the developer or whomever they, they're rebuilding, that's more of a processes and systems thing that I don't feel as qualified to wax eloquently about. But I promise you, I'm very good at staffing and personnel, I've done tons of it. Lift, shift, move people around. If I was not confident in this assessment, I would not stand here asking for it.
It, I assume the person, the consultant you're bringing in is highly experienced in community development and I would think it wouldn't take 60 days to, to come up with some recommendations on how to streamline that operation, so.
It won't take more than 60 days, but that's the scope of work he submitted and that I signed off on. And he has had great success with the City of Jacksonville, which, like this place, has switched back and forth between ideologies and bottlenecks. And he's had proven success for several mayors that I know. And it's a strong mayor system up there, so the mayor hires and fires everybody. I'm going to give him a chance to come do some of that magic that he's done for Jacksonville here.
Arden, I agree with you. Every time I ever, half the time I ever heard about permits being stuck, they were stuck in the floodplain department. What I've never understood is if you got a foot of water in your house and all you're doing is putting your cabinets and your, your drywall and your baseboards back, why does it have to even go through a flood, floodplain review?
It sounds like that's what this guy's going to do, is review all of that and streamline it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just curious why that would have to, that never made any sense to me. I understand if you got to tear your house down, start building a new one, that, that would make sense, but anyhow.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Sazan?
No.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Discuss Kim Lee Horn's scope of services and work authorization related to revised fill ordinance and development regulations. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the scope of services provided by Kimberly Horn to authorize the city manager enter into work authorization.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
I was understanding after conversations with the city manager and city attorney that we don't, we've already got this covered and we don't need this scope of work to spend money on anymore.
Correct, yeah.
I know I'm the one that wanted it, but-
Yeah, this was a late, yeah, this was a late-
I'm not used to people actually doing stuff when we, you know, so, I, yeah.
Yeah, action's been taken with staff to bring in a special project coordinator so we can do it in-house. That way, because I really think this is more of a legal change than it is a brand-new re-engineering, because we're repealing and we're adopting a nearby municipality's ordinance. And that way, you guys can have some face time too with them, that way it's reflexive, reflective of the entire commission too. So, it's going to be done in-house. And, you know, if we, down the road, we end up needing an outside service, that, you'll know about that, but we don't need it right now.
Okay, let's hear from Gary. Gary, if you would.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Gary Volinak, Public Works Director. Just to kind of give a little bit of an overview so that the public is up to speed on what you're, you're discussing here. On July 1st, agenda item H7, terrain modification manual was discussed. Commissioner Clark had presented a, a proposal framework to reevaluate the ordinances, look at the ordinances, the Treasure Island ordinances, before the terrain modification manual made the eight changes. And also to look at simplifying both in terms of fill addition and also grading plans, try and simplify the process, help to expedite it for the public and for city staff. Staff met with Kimberly Horn, we obtained a proposal. It was within the ballpark number that had been established by the commission at the July 1st meeting. And, and the, they are ready to go forward, excuse me. But the, we've had several meetings in-house, the city manager, the city attorney, myself, community development staff, and we feel that it'd be a lot more expedient if you give us the chance to go through the ordinances. I think we can go ahead and ferret out those items that are maybe in conflict or are causing trouble. And we can, we can provide a turnaround, both in terms of the review process, simplifying it, that's the whole idea, and, and get that done a lot quicker than Kimberly Horn could. They wanted six months, we were able to get them down to four months, but still, we feel in-house, we can do it even faster than that and save the city some money. So, we request that you allow us to proceed that way. The city manager will keep you informed as how we proceed and we, we'll get this turned around in-house.
Great, appreciate that. So, go ahead. I haven't done open public-
Can I just, can I just paraphrase what I heard from city manager and city attorney? Is that we, we looked at the St. Pete Beach, I think it was, and Madeira Beach, much simpler, talked to contractors. They said, "We don't want to work with Treasure Island, it's terrible. We have no problem with the Madeira and the St. Pete Beach one." So, your plan is to develop a new one based on those two simple fill dirt ordinances? So, then we will basically have a simple fill dirt ordinance and we'll remove and replace?
Correct, with a drain, with a simplified drainage plan.
Sounds perfect to me. And we don't, so we save money on not having to use Kimberly Horn.
And the reason we do it in-house is it moves faster. Because if you do it outside, it's a whole procurement process and there's a whole debate about the scope of work. Just get somebody who's got basic planning experience and they go through all eight chapters of the ordinance, make sure everything makes sense. It's just, this is not a permanent position, but this is somebody who needs to really sit down and substantively work on it for a number of hours. So, that's why this is the best.
And you'll help them make sure it's all legally.
Correct, yeah. So, it's a quasi-legal, quasi-engineer and quasi-community development project.
Okay. Richard, would you like to say anything?
Sure. It's been an interesting couple of weeks. Richard Harris, 374 Bay Plaza, once again, planning and zoning board chairman. I'm also a professional civil engineer and have been for 39 years. In my experience, I've probably done thousands of lot grading plans. I got involved in this thing when Mr. Darren Brown said he was delayed for five weeks trying to get his plan approved through the city. And did a lot of research, found out that it is a process problem. Situation was, Mr. Brown, it's partly his fault, he submitted his house plans to the city. The city immediately subbed it out to an outside engineer. They took a couple of weeks, sent it back with a bunch of review comments, it went back and forth and it ended up being five weeks. It's just something that the outside engineer doesn't even want to work. He didn't make any money off it, I think he made $1,300. The other one was, there was a meeting here on Thursday with the seawall builders and they all had the impression that the seawalls had to be built up at elevation five, no matter what. Didn't matter if the finished floor of the house that you're building the seawall at is elevation four, you still got to build it at five and flood the house. Of course, that's incorrect. The information is in here, but I agree with the approach of, let's take this 136-page document and make it more user-friendly. I was looking at seawalls and I'm like, where in the heck in this 136 pages does it say that seawalls have to be built at the elevation five? After digging around in there for half an hour, I found this statement. "The goal for type D dot four development shall be achieving a minimum top of structure elevation of 5.00." That's great, you know? Why do you call it type D dot four development? Why don't you just call it the seawall? That's what it is, you know? But the average person out there, including the staff, is digging through these 136 pages and they're going, "I can't find what I need." As a professional engineer, it even took me 20 minutes to find it. I'm like, and it's just written so like it takes, the author, like the author wanted to be the guy who interpreted the, the document. And he's been fired, we're no longer going to be using him. But what I wanted to do was use my experience, I volunteered to Gary Volinak to help him out if at all possible. I've actually been a volunteer for this city since 2002, 23 years, between the code enforcement board, the planning and zoning board, and other things that I've done. You know, why do I do this? My wife thinks I'm crazy. I just want to see Treasure Island a better place, you know? I mean, we took a hit during the hurricane, we just need to get people back in their houses. We need to help out people like Darren Brown, who has suddenly started working again. And thank you to everybody who got him going again. I hope that the meeting that I was not at with the seawall builders straightened them out. You know, you can't build a seawall at elevation five at the house that it's protecting as elevation four, you know? When do you need a sump pump? I heard something to the effect of, "Put a sump pump in. When do you need a sump pump? When the power goes off, you know, during a storm." So, I think that I am more than willing to take my time and help out this situation. I've talked to, a lot to Gary and I think we have a good public works director. And the biggest thing that I've always said in my business is, that man knows how to get things done. We don't need people who don't want to go through a bunch of paperwork, they want to see the end result. And the end result on this is building new houses, raising houses, building new seawalls, making the city better. And I'm here to help. I appreciate the fact that we're not throwing another $42,000 of good money after bad. I know we spent a ton of money on advanced engineering, not a real big fan of their manual. It's, it's just difficult. And the average individual out there, I mean, the poor guy who's trying to build a house, like Darren Brown, for instance, he was in IT all his life. He got a, a email and said, "You can't proceed." He never actually got a stop work order, but he's a law-abiding citizen and he stopped work for five weeks. It should never happen. And so, let's, let's see what we can do and make it better. And I'm just here to help. As a 39-year-old, 39-year resident, I am 39-year-old. I'm a little older than that, I want to say. But as a 39-year resident, just here to help.
Thank you, Richard. All right, so it sounds to me as though we want to retract the motion.
Yes.
Okay, so who, who made the motion?
Now, just, just, you can move right on to the next item, which is commissioner reports and it'll just die off because obviously, you know, it's unnecessary, so.
Do we need to do any other kind of motion to get this moving forward the way we discussed it?
Not really, not really, because right now, I mean, the city manager's already announced that he's going to be advertising that position tomorrow and that person's going to get to work immediately. And because it's employment, it doesn't take another ordinance or resolution or anything.
Yeah. And just to piggyback off of Mr. Harris, I mean, I got, you know, Darren Brown was one guy. I have four more Darren Browns now that are stuck in TMM hell. So, the faster we can get this done, I think, the better. That would be great, so.
Okay, then let's move forward. And so, H11, nomination of Mayor Ann Marie Brooks, City of Madeira Beach to represent the Big C on the Forward Pinellas Board. What this is all about is that the Big C is all the coastal communities and they're represented by the mayors. And the, the mayor of Reddington Shores, I believe it was, David Will, he resigned from the position as the representative from the Big C. The only person that threw their name in the hat was Mary Ann Brooks, and I'll tell you, she's a great mayor from Madeira Beach, and that she wants to be on the Forward Pinellas Board. So, we need to do that. Each commission needs to, to basically take a vote on who is going to represent the Big C in the Forward Pinellas Board. So, if we can have a motion to nominate her.
I move to nominate Ann Marie Brooks, Mayor of Madeira Beach, to serve on the Forward Pinellas Board as a representative of the Big C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment? No public comment, anything up here as a discussion? Nothing here? Here we can go with voice roll. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right? Unanimous? All right, and now we have H12.
Thank you. I had a nice conversation with our city manager today and I would like to ask the commission for the duration of just 30 days to consider raising the fee by not exceeding $2 to observe its effects on visitors and local businesses. It's up to the discretion of the city manager and he'll run it. So, as easy as that sounds, I make a motion to give the city manager authority on parking for the next 30 days and setting parking fees not to exceed $2 to observe its effects on visitors and local businesses.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, any discussion up here? All right. This is going to be a resolution, an ordinance? It's actually got to be an ordinance to change the fees, correctly?
Yeah, it actually can be done as both in the sense that you can, you can pass a resolution right now, as Commissioner Sazan has moved for, to allow them the discretion to higher the fees in the meantime. But to make the permanent change, I have to draft the new ordinance, I'll probably have the draft next week, it'll be on the next agenda, and then, of course, that takes two readings. So, it will be official law in 30 days, but you can authorize him, the authority, administrative authority, to raise it up to $2 right now. I don't see any issue with that. I mean, somebody can make an argument, it goes against the ordinance, but it's for such a low period of time, I don't think there's any standing to challenge that.
Okay. Well, let's take a roll call anyhow.
Commissioner Sazan?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Now, let's move on to commissioner reports.
All right. First, I would like to congratulate once again Chief Bars for his new appointment as the president of the Florida Fire Chiefs Association. It's nice to have you as one of ours and as a representative for the whole state of Florida, so it's pretty nice. I'd also like to, once again, I've had a lot of people reach out to me and, and mention that they never even thought about picking up the papers out of the vacant lots that they know they walk by every day. So, I just, kind of another reminder, we do still have a lot of people not living in their homes. We are in rainy season, so if you know people are not living in these houses, please, if you see papers, if you see anything that is small enough for you to pick up and throw away in your trash, if you could please do so, it would just be such a huge help, one on Public Works, trying to keep our drains clean, and also help us from our roads flooding and quite frankly, just make our neighborhoods look better. So, if you see them in front of these vacant homes, in the gutters, please just, just pick them up. And again, we're still working. It's not as easy as it may sound because there, you get into constitutional reasons why newspapers can throw. So, it is a difficult thing, but in the meantime, if we could still keep doing that, that would be great. And I just wanted to remind everybody, I have had a lot of people comment, because when I get emails to my city email, I actually respond typically the same day, but I try to within at least 48 hours. And it's funny because a lot of them have said to me that, and I'm not speaking about the current commission, I'm just saying in general, they have not been used to that. So, they're almost surprised when I respond to them. So, I just wanted to kind of remind everyone that we're here working for you, the citizens. So, when you guys have an issue, whether it's, you know, at your own home, if it's with, you know, a staff member, if it's an idea you have or something, you know, a sidewalk that needs fixed or whatever it is, that's what we are here for. Reach out to us, you can go on our city website, it has our city phone numbers on it, our email addresses, that's what we are here for. So, please know that we are here to work for you guys and we don't take that lightly. I don't think there's one of us that takes that lightly. And we will get back with you. I've, I've not really heard of anybody up here who doesn't respond and isn't responsive. So- isn't responsive. So please just remember, we're here as your representative. We're here to take your issues to the city manager so that he can represent all of us, and which means therefore you. So just keep that in mind, and we definitely want to serve you guys well in our stint up here. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Turn this on. Yeah. So we have a workshop Friday on the budget, which I think is one of the most important things that we do every year. So it's at 10:00 a.m. I encourage residents to come, and if you can, and let your, you know, voices be heard about the budget, because I think it's incredibly important. I plan on setting up next week a District Two kind of budget meeting where people who can't make it to the workshop can come and let me know their concerns, issues, so I can hear those and pass those along. Secondly, I still continue to get, you know, emails on permit issues, so keep those coming to me. I'm happy to try to help whatever I can. Got very good feedback and help when I pass those on to CDD and to the city manager. And I do also, I want to thank you guys for helping with this TMM issue, because I think it is a big, big issue for the city and the residents. And also with the trash. I mean, again, I think, and I want to make sure that folks out here realize what happened tonight. You know, the TMM, I came to you, I said, "We need to go do a study probably." It was going to cost us 50 grand. In the old days, probably nothing would have ever happened with that. Now, this time, we come and we're working on it, and we're going to not even need to spend the money, and we're going to do it quickly. So, I mean, I like what I see. Kudos to everyone that's working on those things. Lastly, I did mention this to the city manager before the meeting, and I'm going to follow up on it, but I have got two residents in my district who have multiple homes that were purchased next to them, I think by some sort of, I don't know who, not, some sort of business, and I think they fixed them without a permit, but that wasn't really their issue. Their issue is like they're renting them out like weekly, I think. And so, you know, I think that's something that I'm going to talk to you guys about on what we can do about that, because that's certainly not allowed, I don't believe, and also not the spirit of, I think, what we want in the town. So I just, heads up, I'll be following up with you guys on that. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sazan?
I got a couple of emails from some constituents of mine. I'd like to share this idea with the rest of the commission. I'm sure they got this email as well. Kingfish Park, which is the old bridge that went into Madeira Beach, I'd like to see if possibly we could consider selling it instead of repairing it. It is falling apart, and we have allocated half a million dollars to fix Kingfish Park seawall, which already fell into the Gulf of America, Mexico. And of course, it would be a referendum for March 2026. We would obviously sell it to the surrounding landowner. It would be a substantial amount of money, in my opinion. So it'd be nice to maybe put that on an agenda and maybe have, I don't know, $1.5 million added to our coffers. That'd be nice. As for the Gators property, I would like to make sure that Kimley Horn includes in their Phase Two portion of the LDRs, the Planned Redevelopment Zoning District for the largest landowner, also known as Gators Property. We give them their own named zone, the Planned Redevelopment Mixed Use Northern Entry. And then update on the bathrooms at Treasure Bay. Gary and Kathy are working on quotes for outdoor restroom facilities and maintenance building for Treasure Bay. Once received these quotes, they'll bring it to the commission for consideration. And finally, with the help of Cindy, the president of the Paradise Island Civic Association, we finally had our No Pizza Pizza Party meet and greet on July 31, 2025, our first general meeting in over a year. We had about 30 attendees. I hope that the next meeting will be larger. We're thinking probably October, November. My main goal that I let them know was fiscal responsibility and common sense decision-making. That's my top priority. And of course, concerns of Treasure Bay, it's construction of the living shoreline and the difficulties that it'll bring in the future as the commission decides what's next for Treasure Bay and how it's funded. Thank you. And we had sushi.
Commissioner Dickey?
Excuse me. I want to start out by recognizing and thanking Richard Harris. He is somebody I have very much come to appreciate, and I lean on him a lot. I go to him for advice on a number of subjects. He was my opponent when I ran for this position, and it was a tough campaign. He was a very tough campaigner. But I have to tell you, he's done more for this city over the last 20 years than probably any other individual. So I want to thank him and publicly recognize his contributions to this city. So thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
I had two, I've got three other things that I want to talk about. This one here, most of you who don't live on Sunset Beach may not recognize this, but this is Land's End. And what is it Land's End to? Let me see if I can reduce this a little bit. Or, Jason, is there some way I can make this take the whole screen up and maybe, I guess not. Let me do this here. Oops. That didn't help there. But anyway, that's Land's End. And Land's End sent me a letter earlier in the week, and they asked me to read it here, but I want to give you some background on there. This is an older picture of Land's End. It literally is the southernmost point of not just Sunset Beach, but Treasure Island. And this boardwalk here, this half-mile boardwalk that starts right here and goes all around, or did go all around to the west end of Land's End. The Land's End Condo Association, many, many years ago, agreed with the city to keep and maintain this and keep it maintained and to keep it open to the public for forever. And they've really had a hard time doing that, not only with the most recent hurricanes, but every single hurricane we get, this boardwalk gets destroyed. And they came up after Hurricane Elaine, they, you know, this was torn up pretty badly. Not pretty badly, it was completely destroyed. And all that extra sand that we had on Sunset Beach, they were very creative, and they started moving that sand and filling this whole area up. So what we have right now is a walkway. It's a, if you haven't been in there, I go jogging there every other night, but it's a walkway. It's not a boardwalk anymore. But the Land's End, at their own expense, have been keeping this up and maintaining it, and they did apply for a state grant. And let me tell you a little bit about that grant. The grant was for Land's End Public Walkway and Seawall. They requested from the state $511,713 for construction of a resilient, scenic, ADA-accessible pedestrian walkway to replace the hurricane-damaged boardwalk. The state told them, "Hey, we've never, ever given a grant to any condo association. We haven't ever given a grant to anything other than a municipal government or a city government or government-related." And they asked us to, the condo association asked us to join them in asking for this grant. Anyway, let me read this letter to you I got earlier this week. It says, "We want to," from the condo association president, "We want to express our sincere thanks to you and the City of Treasure Island for writing a letter to support Land's End at Sunset Beach, condemning its recent grant application with the State of Florida to replace our damaged boardwalk. As you know, the storms tore up the old boardwalk, and we had to rebuild. We have a requirement to keep the walk open to the public, and therefore, thought a grant might be available. Since we are not a government entity but have an obligation to the city to keep the walkway open to the public, we technically qualified, but it took a lot of discussion with Senator Segley and Representative Shaney offices to explain why it made sense to award us this grant. We really needed the support letter from the City of Treasure Island to convince everyone that the city was supportive of this request. We were recently informed, we were awarded a grant of $511,000." So everybody's very happy about that. They're happy about it. We're happy about it, because right now, it's not ADA accessible, but they're going to be lying on top of that surface, and this is something the city manager and I will be looking at tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock with them. They're going to be lying some kind of material on top of that to make it where you could, you know, operate a wheelchair on there. It's not just sand. So it's going to be, and it's going to be a lot more resilient. It's not going to come to a crash. But anyway, that's one piece of good news I wanted to share with you. Another thing is July 25, and boy, I wish I could make this bigger. Can I make it bigger? No, I can't. Yeah. July 25 was a pretty important date for the city, and these folks, if anybody ever doubted the commitment and dedication and work ethic of some of our city employees, July 25 would definitely change your mind. Victor Ortiz here, Gary Volnek, Joan Goodrich right here, this is, help me, this is Jessica. She just joined us. She's our new grant manager. And Bobby Shea here. But there were a number of people that worked here Friday night on July 25 until 10:45 p.m. to meet the midnight, the 11:59 p.m. deadline of getting all those grants in that you've heard mentioned by both Mayor Dr. and by the city manager. So, but to tell you a little bit more about those grants, let me tell you. And by the way, you don't make the deadline. You don't even go to second base. You've got to make this deadline. You can't call and say, "Hey, can we turn this in Monday?" You've got to make that deadline. That's one of the things that they did. But they submitted these five requests for about $22 million. But anyway, I wanted to thank those people because when I heard from Joan at 11:31 that night and saw that picture, it was a big relief, because I knew it was going to be very difficult to get all those in and to make that deadline. They were very complicated, highly detailed grant applications. It's not just sending an email or a memo and saying, "Hey, we'd like to have this money." There's a lot of documentation that's required for that. But they got all five projects in. Having said that, and I do appreciate the comments from both the city manager and the mayor to talk about the rebuilt TI work group. Our last meeting was on July 21. So for five months, this committee worked hard on a lot of these things. And the four individuals over here on the left, Sherri Cohen, Peter Donna Tooney, Ginger Gapper, and Mark Hoey, who's here, were the resident representatives on that. County Commissioner Kathleen Peters was also on it. Joan and Gary were all part of it as well. And I want to tell them how much I appreciate all the work that they did. But our goal was to seek out grant funding, and that's what we have done. We attended a number of state, federal, and county public meetings to learn more about the type of grants, because when you see some of these grants, you saw the city manager, he said only two of the five fit the top five priorities. But we looked at the entire list of capital investment items that were on there. We tried to get everything in here, but there's certain requirements to even apply for the grant in here. And if it doesn't have to do with mitigation, then you can apply. If it has to do with repair of something that was torn and the damage, that doesn't apply. You can't use that. If it has to do with just general maintenance or repair and maintenance, or it just came to its depreciated lifetime, you can't apply for that with this. So these were the five projects that were put in with a total of $29 million, with $21 million right there that we're hoping to get. And I'm feeling pretty confident, I know the committee is, that four of these five projects might get approved. And then, I didn't want to lose sight of this next one that comes up, and that's, this hasn't been applied for yet, because the window of applications hasn't been. But there's $136 million that the county's setting on through the CDBG-DR program, that beginning in the fall, we can apply for these kinds of things. So there's two projects on there, that, at least two, that I'm hoping that we do apply for the grants to get a piece of that $136 million there. And that's a new public works facility and the new public safety facility. Now, we may not get a penny for either one of these. I don't want to build up false hopes. But I think, given the fact that we did so well, that the team did so well to go after this money and get some, and we've got, again, a strong possibility we can get that, you know, I'm very hopeful that we can get this money to rebuild the infrastructure that we need to rebuild. But I just wanted to end, again, by thanking the people who gave five months of their lifetime and participated in this process, because it did, I think it did pay off for the city, and I very much appreciate their efforts. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you. I had the opportunity on July 24 to come here to our fifth floor and participate in coping with hurricane fatigue. I'll tell you, this was, you know, I showed up because I was the mayor, and I guess I should have showed up. But I'll tell you, when I walked out, it was unbelievable. And I'll just give you two seconds worth. What it was about was understanding the mental health impact of back-to-back hurricanes. Experiencing repeated hurricanes can lead to increased anxiety, depression, PTSD, and the emotional toll can be profound, especially for those affected in the communities. Started out by saying overwhelmed, well, you're not alone. Let's talk about it. Talked about the emotions, talked about anxiety, talked about loss of home and belongings, talked about financial worries and uncertainty about rebuilding. And I'll tell you what, it was probably the best seminar that I've been to this year. It was put on by the... Oh, heck. Anyhow, it was put, oh, here it is, the National Alliance of Mental Illness. And this is Pinellas, the chapter, Pinellas Chapter. And I'll tell you, it was, when I walked out of there, I was thinking, you know, I have felt this way. You know, I've felt overwhelmed. I've felt, you know, what is, what are we going to do with the financial studies? You know, everything that was there was 100%. Even better yet, LIFT is looking at putting these on at least once a quarter, and they're going to have this particular organization visit with us again sometime during the course of the next year. And it was great. I really enjoyed it. There were about 35 people there, but we need to get the word out next time that they're going to be around, because I'll tell you what, when I walked out of there, it made a lot more sense than when I walked in. So I appreciate everybody tonight. Thank you for being here, and we are adjourned.